Okay. Let's wait until they're finished.
So much easier if you do it.
Can we good? So I'll start now. Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the first day of spring. For those of you that didn't have enough winter. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three, the Planning Act nineteen ninety is amended. This meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I continue with my remarks, I'll just take a moment to introduce firstly the panel. On my far left, Ms. Natalia Popovic. On my immediate left, Ms. Laura Alderson. On my near right, Ms. Sophia Ruddock. On my far right, Mr. Bill Dalton. At the far left end of this desk is our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Ms. Barbara Bartosik. And at the right end of this desk and in the area in front of the panel is our support staff. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge that the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your team is called, when your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are sent out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure is that I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. With the exception of some cases where the applicants have requested deferral, we will dispense with those upfront in the hearing. Making submissions. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Before hearing our first item, we will need confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on Thursday, March sixth. May I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
I still move.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson, the secondor.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dalton, all in favor? Okay, the minutes of the February, March sixteenth, sixth meeting have been adopted. Firstly, panel, are there any declarations of interest for items in this morning's time slot? I do declare an interest in item five. I know one of the people in the audience who I presume may be speaking on this item. So when the time comes, I will pass the chair along to Ms. Alderson. Okay. Staff, are there any declarations of interest in the morning? Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral in this morning's time slot?
Quite a few, Mr. Chair. The first one is item one. Do you want all of them, or?
Yeah, give me them all.
One, three, five, and thirteen. There could be more.
Sorry, one, three, five, and?
Thirteen. Those are requests by the applicants, and then any other ones we can deal with as the items come up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I understood that number six was potentially an automatic deferral because the variance has been changed?
Well, the applicant will have to address that, so.
So we'll just deal with it in order?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the last one for this morning is thirteen?
Correct.
Good. Okay, then let's start. Maybe I'll do, I'll do the deferrals, I guess the first couple, and then I'll leave, and you can do number five. Perfect. Oh, and Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to close?
None today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Got away for a few hours. Okay, item number one, Sixth Queen Anne Road. The agent is Orest Stoyanovsky. And I understand there is a wish to defer this item today. Is Mr. Stoyanovsky available, I guess virtually, to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stoyanovsky?
Good morning, Chairman of the Committee. My name, Orest Stoyanovsky. I'm an agent on this application. And respectfully to forestry comments.
Sorry, sorry, your address?
Seventy-three Evelyn Drive, Toronto.
Okay, thank you. If you could just explain your request for deferral?
Sure. With respect to forestry comments, we would like to defer our application to continue conversation with forestry. We had a preliminary talk with them, and we think we can improve those comments, hopefully to achieve no objection. So we would like to defer to the next available hearing.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions for Mr. Stoyanovsky? And Adam or Camille, is there anyone in the hearing room or virtually?
No, Mr. Chair.
No, no participation. Okay, then I guess we can go into committee for a decision on the deferral request.
Mr. Chair, based on the request by the applicant and no opposition, and to allow time to discuss with the forestry department, I move to defer this matter to the next available hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. Is there a secondor for?
I can second that motion.
No, Ms. Ruddock, thank you very much. All in favor? Okay, that item has been deferred to a future date unanimously. We can now move to the next request for deferral, which is item three, three ninety-three Rustic Road. And this is an automatic deferral due to an error in the.
In the notice.
Date of the public notice. And it appears there's been a commitment. This is, item has already been placed on the agenda for April third. So, Mr. Romano?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. We're in agreement with the deferral request and wish to have proper notice issued. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Romano? Camille, anybody in the hearing room or at home?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then let's go into committee and make a decision on this deferral request.
Similarly, Mr. Chair, on the basis of the nature of the automatic deferral, I move that this matter be deferred. And I believe someone said April.
Yeah, April third.
Okay, to the next available.
Oh.
I believe that's.
So I was wrong in that?
I think it says that, actually. Okay.
Okay.
So let, let's leave that out of the motion. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson, all in favor? Okay, item three has been deferred unanimously. I'm now going to leave the room due to a conflict, and Ms. Alderson will chair item five.
Item five is forty-three Old Oak Road. There are nine variances on, on that application. I believe the applicant is asking for a deferral. Would the applicant like to come forward if they're in the room? They are not in the room. Is there an applicant on the line? Camille?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Sorry, good morning, Madam Chair, Jonathan Buzgowski, three zero one Kiwatin Avenue.
Hello, go ahead. I just wanted to ask you about a deferral. Why, why are you asking for a deferral, sir?
In conversations with planning, there is a tree that is located where the proposed garden suite is, and part of the policies of SASS six seventy that permit garden suites speaks to maintaining, if possible, trees. Now, this is not a healthy tree, so we have spoken with planning as well as urban forestry. They have requested that we get and obtain a permit to remove that tree before we move forward with our application before the C of A. So we are in the process right now of making that application to remove the unhealthy tree where the proposed garden suite is.
Okay, thank you. I, I did see the urban forestry report. I did not see an arborist report. Was there an arborist report done?
We, Madam Chair, we have not. We are in the process of obtaining that now.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak to this matter in the room? Would you like to come forward, sir? Please state your name and your address.
It's Sean Sanford, sixty-four. Sean Sanford, sixty-four Old Oak Road. I live directly across from the applicant.
So we're not going to talk about the merits of the application today? What we're going to talk about is the deferral and whether you agree to the deferral.
Understood. My understanding is that either we can defer or the committee can make a decision to dismiss. So I do not agree with the deferral. I would rather see if there's an opportunity to dismiss the application based on our objections in the application.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I believe there's someone else that would like to speak as well?
Yes, Guy Crocker, sixty-six Old Oak Road, almost directly across. I just want to mimic my neighbor's response to it. Given our objections, I would like to move forward instead of just deferring. I do understand the forestry report. Find it kind of interesting that the, the tree in question happens to be, well, kind of where one of the buildings wants to go. So, again, I would like to move forward with comments rather than deferring. So, Madam Chairman.
I understand. Thank you for your comments. So we'll take this into committee for a decision? Discussion?
Well, given the applicant has to do some further research, I would move a motion for deferral.
Would you like to make a conditional on an arborist report?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Seconded by Natalia Popovic. I don't get to say your name a lot. Okay, all in favor? That's carried unanimously. And why we got that condition in there?
Okay. Moving on to the next deferral, which is number six, thirty-four Blair Athol Crescent. Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 no. We're not going to do that one right now. We'll deal with that one in order when it comes up. We will deal with item thirteen. Twenty-two Eden Brook Hill. Yes, the agent requested deferral in the last couple of days. And the agent is Steve Giordano, who is participating virtually? Mr. Giordano?
Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning, members of the committee. Stephen.
Good morning. If you could just give us your name and address and tell us why you want this item deferred?
Definitely. So Stephen Giordano, I'm the agent for the applicant at twenty-two Eden Brook Hill. My address is six oh two Winona Drive. We're requesting a deferral just to finalize our TRCA permit, which is currently in the process, as well as finalize communication with urban forestry. We since have completed our arborist report and tree preservation plan, so we would just like to have that circulated to urban forestry for their review and approval. We believe we can satisfy all concerns and comments, so we would just like to defer to get everyone the appropriate documentation.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Panel, any questions for Mr. Giordano? Camille, anyone in the room or at home?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks. So let's go into committee for a motion.
Mr. Chair, on the basis of allowing time for further discussions, I move to defer this matter to the next available date.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. Is there a secondor?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson, all in favor? Thank you. Item number thirteen has been deferred by unanimous vote. So now we can move back to the order. The order listed on the agenda, we'll deal with item two, which is eight Lou Pommade Street. I'm just going to read a little quick summary of this one. Purpose is to construct a new rear yard deck. There are three variances. I've noted this one down for being straightforward. I'll just canvas the panel and see if there's any need for a presentation. No. Mr. Swan?
Yes, hello?
Hello. Yes, sir. Could you just give us your address, please?
Sure. My name is Michael Swan, and I reside at one oh four Seton Drive in Aurora.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. The panel believe that your application is quite straightforward, and we really don't need a presentation. Would you be okay with answering a question or two if we have any?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll ask the first one. There's a planning, community planning condition attached to this application. Are you accepting of that condition if it were imposed?
If, if it is going to be imposed, the neighbor, sorry, the owner is aware of this, he would prefer to only have it on the east side, which is the attached neighbor. But if you insist on both sides, then he will abide by that.
Okay. Panel, any other questions for Mr. Swan? Camille, anybody here at home?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then let's go into committee for a motion.
Just, just a comment. The applicant is asking for the privacy screen to be on only one side, and we have one letter of support from a neighbor, and I'm just wondering if those two things intersect and whether we can, whether we can allow him just to put up the one, the one side, if that neighbor is the one who would not be affected or would be affected.
So we're absolutely certain of that?
No, that's what I'm asking. So this form letter of support from the neighbor, which I believe came in, and additional materials, is saying they support it. I don't think, I don't think there were any conditions attached to it.
But we don't know if they didn't look at the AIC and see that request and are in agreement with it. Maybe they didn't articulate that.
Right.
Maybe the neighbor will move as well. It might be a new neighbor next year.
I'd feel more comfortable imposing it on both sides.
On both sides.
Something can get settled in between now and
Okay.
getting it approved. They could, you know, maybe get away with just one.
Yeah, have that discussion with the neighbor.
Yeah.
Okay. If that's the case, then I'm prepared to make a motion if no one else is. I believe this application meets the four tests under the Planning Act and move for approval subject to the community planning condition of privacy screens.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a secondor for Ms. Alderson's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, all in favor? That item is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Swan. Moving on to item four, twenty-four Water Beach Crescent. The agent is Michael Persacini.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. The person listed, Michael, is not going to be speaking. There's a call-in user. I didn't get his name, but he's going to be speaking on behalf of the file.
So somebody who will be speaking. Okay. Okay, this application, the purpose is to legalize and to maintain the existing detached dwelling with an attached garage currently under construction. A previous Committee of Adjustment application approved variances relating to lot coverage, floor space index, front yard setback, height, platform area, and building space width. And there's an order to comply here, and it appears that construction did not reflect the, I guess, the approved variances. So there's two variances for us to consider. Panel, do we need a presentation on this? Anyone? Okay. Mr. Persacini? Or sorry?
Hi. Good morning, madam. Yes, hi. This is Park Patel.
Yes?
And this is Park Patel from Zebra Contractors, agent of twenty-four Water Beach Crescent.
Staff, do you need the name spelled?
Yes, you're going to need to email us your full name and your address because you did not register to speak.
Yes. Full name, Park, P as a picture, A R, P as in Tom, H. Last name Patel.
So you're going to have to email this information to us because I can't, I can't completely hear you. So you're going to have to email it to us, to our general email. Okay?
Yeah, sure, sure, we can do it.
Thank you.
And, okay, I guess, and email your address as well?
Sure.
Your name and address. And could you just tell it, what's your, your role in this? Your name doesn't appear anywhere here. Who are you and how are you related to this application? What's your role?
So, yeah, we have, we had the homeowner to build the house. We are the builders, contractors for this house. After he got the permit, we built the house for him. So we did like from demolition to finishing, everything.
Barbara, do we, do we need authorization for this gentleman to speak to this as a builder? I'll, I'll listen to him, but.
Mr. Chair, there is somebody else online to speak on this file. I'm not too sure if they're going to do the presentation or.
Okay. Sir, staff have decided that your application's pretty straightforward. We don't really need a presentation. Would you be okay just to answer a question or two if we have any?
Yes, sure.
Okay. So any questions, first of all, for the builder?
I, I have a question.
Okay, we have a question.
There's a, there's an order to comply on this file, so I'm assuming that it didn't meet the requirements of the building inspector. Can you tell me why, why do we have an order to comply? Why, why was this not, why was this not complied with the? So tell me, tell me.
Yes.
It's, it's oversized, right? It's, it's oversized. So tell me, tell me where it doesn't comply.
Yeah, so the issue was like when owner obtained the COA approval in ten twenty-three, they had a permit drawings according to the approval. We build the houses as per the permit drawings. The issue was when we finished the house, we had from the city, the informers like we had an issue in a conversion from Imperial to Matrix, and that's why we, FSI is increasing point zero. And that's why we, FSI is increasing point zero one percent. The house lot coverage is unchanged, it's same. The only due to conversion error in the drawings from Imperial to Matrix, we have this issue. And that's why we are here to correct that conversion errors and get a foreword.
Yeah, if we take a look at.
FSI think it's only point zero one.
If we take a look at the previous decision, we'll see that these two variances are very close to what was approved.
Right.
That's my recollection.
Yeah, so what they're seeking is increase max FSI by zero point one.
So it's a small, I realize it's a small increase. I'm just wondering who sent the, who sent the photos.
What's the height?
Point two eight.
Point two eight.
Point two eight. It's not, not huge, but I'm assuming the side yard setback was the, the big concern.
I don't know. And it's, it doesn't have, they've complied with the side yard setback.
I'm just curious, who sent, who sent the photos in? Did you send the photos in, sir?
Photos for the house?
Yep.
Yes, the owner sent the photos as well.
The owner sent them in, not, not, not a neighbor. Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a speaker. Camille?
Mr. Chair, I believe it's the owner of the house.
You can't speak because an agent spoke. Okay. So if, if there's nothing else, I guess we can go into committee and make a motion.
With that, I'll move a motion for approval. I believe the application meets the four tests, and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Second or Ms. Riddick, thank you very much. All in favor? That application is approved unanimously. Item five was deferred. Next up, we have item six, thirty-four Blair Athol Crescent. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage and a pool in the rear yard. We have twelve variances. Community planning staff. Oh, there is there, yes, I'm sorry. There's a revised application. Ten variances. We have Urban Forestry requesting refusal. And they've offered their conditions one and two as sort of a fallback position. We have an opposition letter. We have some confusion, I understand, with respect to variance four, which as written is not a variance, but we understand in fact that there is a three point zero meter setback, which would request a variance and would render the notice as being improper. And we have the Planning Department requesting deferral. So Agent Marco Razone?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Marco Razolini from Sakura Design, twenty State Bank Road, Unit two oh two, Mississauga.
Okay, so is what I said correct that you have to change variance four to read a three point zero meter setback?
So I actually wasn't aware of item four. I think the request for the deferral from planning was because there was confusion about the rear yard setback. That was what they let us know. As background, planning had reached out to us to reduce the coverage variance. We removed the coverage variance entirely. When we submitted back to the zoning examiner, they flagged that we should have had a rear yard setback because there was living space below the rear porch. By the time we reached out to planning, they let us know that because we would be adding a rear yard setback variance, they would be requesting deferral. They submitted that recommendation before we had the opportunity to get back to them. Since then, we did remove the living space below the rear porch, which would resolve the rear yard setback variance. As it wasn't, it wasn't a variance, it is not a needed variance and didn't, wouldn't affect the notice. Item four, that one's new to me.
Sorry, item four is what?
Is new to us. The requirement is three meters. Our proposed is two point four seven. I think it's a minor change to that one item.
But doesn't the bylaw require two point four, and you're proposing, say you're proposing two point four seven?
So the degree of variance is greater. The original zoning review had an error. Then they submitted a revised zoning review, so the applicant should be aware, which did state a three meter requirement. And then the applicant submitted a revised waiver, which didn't capture the three meter requirement. They restated the error of two point four. So it should be three meters required.
Okay, oh, it should be three.
So that, sorry, just to correct that, then the public notice was incorrect. The zoning notice that was used to create this public notice was correct. It's the public notice that was incorrect.
So you agree that?
So it wasn't an error on our side. We used the public notice to create our waiver.
Okay, so you agree that the public notice is incorrect? Yes?
Yes.
So would you therefore agree that we need to defer this to give the public adequate notice on what is actually being requested? Re-item four.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, panel? Okay, do we need to get anybody else's comments on this request? I don't see anything on the chart.
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're good then. Okay, then, let's go into committee and make a decision on this deferral.
Mr. Chair, if there are no questions from my colleagues, I believe we have an agreement that there's a notice issue and this matter should be deferred, deferred to allow for proper notice.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dalton, all in favor? Item deferred unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Razoni. Moving on to item seven. Five to nine Jopling Avenue, South. Purpose is to modify the development standards from site-specific bylaw nine six three two oh two three related to setbacks, height, canopy depth, and the podium and tower floor plate. We have four variances. And I don't have. Oh, we have, we have a, a letter of op, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Yeah, we got all kinds of studies and photos and an arborist report. We don't have any agency comments. We don't have any public comments. Camille, anyone in, there's someone in the room?
In chambers, yep.
You want to speak to this application? You're the applicant. Okay, this is, there's some complexity here. I think we'd all benefit from hearing from you.
Hello? Hi, Mitch Gascoigne, one thirty-four Peter Street. And I'm the applicant for Jopling Residence LP. I submitted a file called massing studies, which I can, if you guys call up, I can walk through very quickly. So it sounds complicated. I think this visual, this presentation will just kind of walk through what's actually happening. So first page is the approval from twenty twenty-three in orange with all the surrounding towers that have been approved in the area. If you go to the next page, it's just a view with all the surrounding towers out of the way, so you can see what we're looking at. It's a thirty-nine story tower, like I said, approved through council in twenty twenty-three. Next slide. We've made a site plan application, and through that process and working with staff, we've realized that we just need to reallocate the density from the original approval. So you'll note that the variances requested don't request any, any additional GFA or any additional units. It's really just taking some of the podium density that you can see outlined in red and moving it up to the tower, where there's like a jog out of the tower. If you go to the next slide. So this is showing the revised tower on the right, so just go to the next slide. So as approved in twenty twenty-three, next slide. A lower podium, next slide. Built form as proposed with the variances in front of you. I've coordinated with staff. Staff are supportive of the changes. I've also coordinated with the counselor's office. The counselor has no issue with the changes. And the variances are really just adjusting the tower floor plate to seven hundred and fifty-one square meters, which is in line with what staff would want in the area, to modify the map through two variances, through setbacks, essentially allowing the setback for the tower floor plate to change. And then through height, and it's actually a height reduction of the podium. We're taking the red outlined area that was previously approved and lowering it to what you see here in the, in the three D model. And the third change, sorry, the fourth change, let me just review, look here. Oh, and because the podium is getting slightly closer to the property line, we actually had to reduce the projection depth of the weather protection so it didn't go past the, the property line. So those are the four changes, two for the, two for the height map, setbacks on the map, change the floor plate size, and a technical change related to the weather protection. Like I said, we'll go through the rest of it. So if you go to the next slide, this is just showing what's happening on the typical floor. All that's really happening is we're just making these two units slightly bigger right now. They're slightly constrained because of this jog that we had in the original bylaw. If you go to the next slide, that's what was approved in twenty twenty-three with the neighboring building. And then if you go to the final slide, this is what I'm asking for on the variances. So like I said, fully coordinated with staff, fully coordinated with the counselor's office, no additional density, just reallocating some things to make the building make a little bit more sense. Happy to answer any questions should you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Gascoigne. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick, I have a quick question. So in twenty twenty-three, it was approved at thirty-nine stories, is that correct?
Yeah.
And now the building is how tall? Additional three stories?
No, no. The, the building is still thirty-nine stories. I'm just lowering the height of the podium.
You're lowering the height of the podium. Okay, sorry. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Camille, anybody want to speak to this?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So let's go into committee for a motion.
So with that, I'll move a motion for approval. I believe the application meets the four tests, and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second or for Mr. Dalton?
I can second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, twenty-five Arcadian Circle. We have a revised application. The purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. We have two variances. We have Urban Forestry requesting conditions, requesting deferral, but, but also suggesting as an alternative, there are conditions one and two. We have three conditions from Transportation Review, no planning comments. And we have opposition from the Long Branch Neighborhood Association. And we have a letter of concern, and we have two registered speakers, Andy Choles from LBNA and Marion Bojan Kowitsz. So Damon Hojati is the agent.
Hi, this is Joanna Damon Hojati.
Hi. Just give us your address and, and make, make your presentation, please.
We are the owners of twenty-five Arcadian Circle. We currently reside a few streets down, forty-one thirty-eighth Street.
Okay. And could you tell us about your application?
I'm happy to. So I wanted to start just with like a little background on us. We've been living in Long Branch for the last nine years. We bought a small old home on thirty-eighth Street when I was pregnant with my first son. We now have three boys. Dominic is eight, Adrian is six, and we just welcomed a new baby, Nico, four months ago to our family. Our older boys go to local Catholic school, Holy Trinity. They love their school. Our whole family adores neighborhood. And that's why we're planning to build this home, so our family could stay in this area for many years to come. About the variances we are requesting, the first one is to increase the maximum permitted floor space. The reason for this is to accommodate our growing family. With three children, we simply need more space. The larger home will allow our children to each have their own bedroom. And since my husband and I work from home part-time as well, we could also, we incorporated an office into the design. Although our family requires more space, we wanted to ensure we stay within the character of the neighborhood. We reviewed recently new-built homes and renovated homes that were approved by the committee. And we wanted to ensure we don't ask for anything too massive. So we're hoping you allow us to build something similar to our neighbors considering our lot size. The second variance that we are requesting is to increase the wall height. Now, the only reason for this request is because we would like to build a home with no roof overhang, with the gutters hidden, and this requires a slightly higher wall height to hide those gutters behind the wall. The actual height of the building will comply with the zoning allowance. When you take into consideration the thirty-centimeter parapet wall exemption, then the difference in height we're asking for would only be twenty-six centimeters. And the design would not create any more shade because the roof is set back and there is no overhang in our design. So a higher wall without roof overhang will create the same amount of shade as a lower wall with the roof overhang. We would also like to note that we reviewed the forestry report. Their concern is that there is a tree that is close to the proposed driveway. So we wanted to clarify that we do not plan on cutting any trees. We will be hiring an arborist, and we will apply for a permit to ensure the safety of that tree that's close to the driveway. We also reviewed the transportation report. The transportation report notes that there is a hydro pole also in proximity of our proposed driveway. So we wanted to let you know that we've been coordinating with Toronto Hydro. We already paid the initial fee, and they're working on relocating the pole to an appropriate location at our cost. We're also aware of the Long Branch Neighborhood Character Guidelines, and we considered all the guidelines in our design. And we outlined this in the Performance Standards Checklist. Lastly, we spoke to all of our neighbors, and we received very positive feedback about our proposed home. We submitted to the committee signatures that we collected from several of our neighbors in support of our variances. And we also actually received a letter of support from our next-door neighbor. Well, thank you very much for your time and consideration. We're happy to address any questions you may have.
Yeah, can I, I'll just kick off with one. I'm just looking at street view, and I'm, I'm wondering how your house would compare to the house immediately to the south of you. It has a flat roof, looks to be quite substantial in size. Would, would your home be comparable in terms of floor space index and approximate design? I, I'm talking specifically, I guess, the flat roof design. Is it somewhat similar?
The house just, I mean, the design's a little bit different. We have a flat roof, and then the roof kind of goes down.
Okay, so that house beside you doesn't? Okay, so that house beside you doesn't have...
I don't know their exact...
Sorry, that house beside you, I guess it's not a flat roof. It's, I guess it's a slow roof.
The house beside us?
It sort of looks flat to me, but, oh, it is flat.
I think it might be flat, the one just south of us. I think it is.
Would your proposed house be similar in size?
I believe so. I don't know their exact floor space index, but I think it would be...
Excuse me, excuse me. Is it a lot deeper than your house, current house? Does it extend deeper into the room?
No. There is a detached garage in there that is deeper than our house. I do believe their lot is smaller, however. Our lot is 50 by 151 and the house south of us, next door, has a smaller lot.
Yep. Okay, panel, any questions?
Just with regards to the trees in question, just looking at the file, so have you retained an arborist?
No, not yet.
Okay. So will you be?
Yes, yes, definitely. We already interviewed several arborists, we just haven't like...
Okay.
We're in the process of hiring one of them. They already came and examined our lot and gave us quotes, so yes.
And have you had any discussions with forestry staff regarding their comment?
No, we didn't. However, we read their report and just to confirm again, we're not planning to cut any trees. We're not planning to damage any trees. We believe the only thing we need to do is get an arborist to confirm a plan on how to ensure safety of that tree that is close to the driveway during our construction, and that's exactly what we plan on doing.
Okay, thank you.
Like the driver or the house doesn't interfere with the tree. It's just within six meters. The driver is within six meters of that one single small maple tree.
Yep, understood, thank you.
Any other questions, panel? Okay, I guess we can move into our other interested parties. Is there anyone in the room, Camille, who wishes to speak to this one that you're aware of? Yes, sir? Can you come up to the podium and give us your name and address?
My name is Marian Boyan Kewich and my address is 3765 Lake Shore Boulevard. And my daughter is the owner of the house and I'm the designer. So I just want to support the application that we take under the consideration of these guidelines from the neighborhood. And the house has some horizontal dividers which creates participation of the wall smaller. Also, the building mass is divided into some sections and projections of the frontier, so we try all the best to fit into the neighborhood. And also, we're not cutting any trees. And the roof is a shallow flood roof, so has a portion of the...
Designer of this house?
Yeah.
Okay, so the applicant's already presented.
Yeah, yeah, just a...
No, no, you don't get to present again.
Yeah, thank you.
No, no, I'm just explaining.
Your daughter has spoken, she represents the file, thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess our final speaker is Andy Choles from the Long Branch Neighborhood Association. Mr. Choles?
Good morning. My name is Andy Choles. I live at 12 Jasmine Avenue in Long Branch. The back half of my backyard is perpendicular to the backyard of 25 Arcadian Circle. I'm a board member of the Long Branch Neighborhood Association. We have mission statement to protect, celebrate, and enhance the neighborhood of Long Branch. Well, this application has a couple of modest variances. I don't have an issue with the building, but my concern is for the trees in the front yard. I had the opportunity to speak with one of the owners of 25 Arcadian recently about their plan to build the new house. It was nice to see they had gone to the trouble of coming up with a design that sought to fit the neighborhood character. This is appreciated very much. We have too many flat roof, big box homes in the area. I do not anticipate any concerns with the view of this home from my backyard. My concern is with the trees in the front yard. Ms. Hojati came to speak to the area neighbors in late February. Speaking with her in my driveway, seeing the drawing and later looking at the tree declaration on file, I was under the impression that no trees would be removed from the property. Presuming all, preserving all trees in our neighborhood is very important and somewhat elemental to our neighborhood character. The plan shows that the house itself is back from these trees in the front yard. However, without proper tree protection zone around each of these trees, they are likely not to survive the construction phase of this home. Overdig, parking of construction machines, and our piling materials too close to the tree on top of the root system are all events that place the trees in peril. I'm especially concerned about the tree closest to the wider driveway. The transportation report mentions that the utility pole will need to be relocated and asks for a specific location to be noted in the plans. The pole is also required to be one meter from trees and the driveway. I'm concerned about this tree closest to the driveway. The forestry report lists two front trees, this tree number one and tree number two, and recommends deferral today until a plan for tree protection can be established. My colleague in the LBNA, Judy Gibson, in an LBNA letter, also identified concerns about the tree between 25 and 23, the neighbor immediately to the south, near the new garage. This tree will also need some protection from possible damage. Without proper tree protection, it is doubtful any of these trees will survive. The LBNA letter includes a section of the plan pertaining to the tree utility pole and the proposed double driveway. Photos of the front yard trees are also included. The final location of the north curb of the driveway is to be north of the present location of the utility pole and very close to this tree. The driveway will be too close to that tree. I'm not sure where the final location of the utility pole will be. I refer you specifically to page three of the LBNA letter where an aerial photo shows the expansive tree canopy offered by these three trees and their full foliage at Arcadian and 23 Arcadian. It is a canopy that cannot be lost in the neighborhood. The chart below the picture reveals that while some Toronto wards have increased their tree canopy, Long Branch has suffered a severe loss of canopy. These figures show from 2009 to 2018. However, the trend has continued in the same direction since and gone further away from the city of Toronto's target for a canopy of 40%. We need to protect all the trees we can. I do look forward to welcoming a new neighbor and a new family to my area of Long Branch. I do feel that the Hojati's dream home can be built pretty much as planned, but I would agree that more concern needs to be shown for the trees on or near the property. Tree protection is certainly needed to protect the trees. The LBNA is in agreement with forestry that this application should be deferred until a plan for proper tree protection can be established. Transportation also has some requirements that are in need of attention. I'm hopeful these issues can be worked out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Choles. Panel, any questions for Mr. Choles? Nope. Okay, so we've heard from everyone?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So let's go into committee for a motion.
No, we need rebuttal.
We are rebuttal, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Hojati.
Hi, Andy, thank you for your comments. Yes, I would like to comment, so I just wanted to repeat again to address your concerns about the tree. So we don't plan to cut any trees. We will not be hurting any trees. There is nothing in our design of the home or the driveways that requires its removal. The driveway takes into consideration the tree that's existing. We actually specifically created the design of the driveway to protect the tree. I would love to have had a bigger, wider driveway, but we didn't want to cut any trees. That's why it's arched to go around the tree to ensure that we do not, that we protect the trees in our neighborhood. And as I mentioned, we are in a process of hiring an arborist to come up with a plan on how to very safely ensure the construction of our home. So and about the, sorry, the comments about the pole. As I mentioned, we've already been in contact with Toronto Hydro for the last several months. It's just a long process. We paid the deposit and they're currently working on the design on how to move the pole at our cost. It will obviously be relocated at a place where it is permitted and suitable to ourselves and all the other neighbors. So I believe there is no purpose for deferral, that deferral would just cost us more time and money. We're now paying, you know, two mortgages out of pocket while we wait. I would suggest it will be possible to get our variances approved maybe with a condition because we do have to, of course, get the permit to safely construct our home, permit from forestry.
And ma'am, can I just ask you, I should have asked this before. Have you read and are you okay with the transportation review conditions? There are three of them?
Yes.
You're familiar with and okay with that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just a comment. I would feel a lot better approving this if we had an arborist report in front of us, a tree protection plan in front of us. I'm sure that the applicant is well-meaning, but, you know, things happen during construction. Trees get damaged easily during construction. And I think that's what urban forestry is really asking us to do, is to defer it so that they can adequately protect these beautiful trees on the property. Yeah, so those are my comments.
So you don't wish to make a motion to that effect? Okay. Okay, can we...
Question of staff, can we make it conditional on, because there is no arborist report, can we make the approval conditional upon an arborist report and a tree protection plan? Like if we, instead of deferring it, could we make it conditional on those things?
It's just if they submit an arborist report, it won't really, it'll just go to the file. There's no
Yeah.
review. For tree protection, they have to do that as part of their building permit anyways? Like they have to put up hoarding and...
Tree protection zone?
Yeah.
Around the three trees? So that will be required of them automatically?
Yeah, they have to as part of their building permit.
Okay.
So, yeah, I was just gonna ask, do you take any comfort in urban forestry conditions one and two to applications?
Well, I think, no, I actually think it would be a shame to lose these trees. You know, I think Mr. Choles is right.
Well...
So...
They do have to apply to urban forestry to damage or remove trees on the city-owned property or the private property. Just asking.
If someone else is prepared to make a motion, I'll see if I can support it.
Okay, well, let's see then, is there a motion to decide on this application?
With that, I'm going to make a counter motion because they're going to be caught regardless. So the trees are going to have to be dealt with later. So on that basis, I do believe the application meets the four tests subject to the transportation and forestry conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second or for Mr. Dalton's motion? That motion?
Mr. Chair, I should have asked this earlier, but before we move on, can I just double check with Madam DST that my colleague has said this? This is my understanding. A building permit, is it correct to say a building permit would not be issued until the tree?
And they'll also have to include tree protection on their building permit drawings. So they'll have to have discussions with forestry before they even go in for building permit because all that will have to be shown on the final plans. They won't, they can't do it without it. So they will be captured.
Sorry, if you have the forestry conditions that are recommended, then they will have to get clearance on those before a permit is issued.
Thank you for that clarification. On the basis of that clarification, my understanding that they'll be captured one way or another. In terms of protecting the trees, I will second my colleague.
Thank you, Ms. Popper. Call in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you, Ms. Hojati. Thank you, Mr. Choles. Panel, is there any interest in a break now or later? Keep going? Okay. Moving on to item nine, 25 Savona Drive. Purpose is to widen the existing driveway. There are two variances and I note to self, very straightforward. Does everyone agree with me? Okay, so do we have Rosalia Mangiardi? Ms. Mangiardi? Oh, you're here! Sorry, I gotta learn to look up. Okay. Now, if you heard, if you heard our little conversation, we don't, we don't really need a presentation from you. If you're okay, maybe just to wait and see if we've got any questions?
Absolutely.
You're good with that? Okay, so panel, any questions about this widened driveway proposal?
No. I noticed there was an accessible parking permit in the application. Is that for yourself or is it for someone that's living with you?
Sorry, it's for myself.
All right, thank you.
So no questions? Then let's go into committee for a decision.
So with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval. I believe the application meets the four tests and there are no conditions.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson, all in favor? Approved unanimously. Item number 10, 59 Brawley Avenue. Purpose is to construct a two-story side addition, including an attached garage and a second-story addition above the existing dwelling. The new dwelling will have two units. This is a revised application. I don't see any amendments to the variances though on this revised page. No? Okay. Four variances. I'm not looking at... How come mine doesn't show, variance one is gone? Variance one's been eliminated?
Applicant revision page eliminates number one and reduces number three, yes.
Mine doesn't show that, anyway. Okay, so we have urban forestry condition two. We have opposition from 46 Norden Avenue. And we have transportation review checking on the status of a one-foot reserve that covers the entire frontage of this lot and would make a driveway impossible as long as it's there, if it's there. And I understand from our briefing this morning that we haven't heard anything subsequent from transportation on this issue. So we need to hear from the agent Enzo Locchisano?
Very good, sir.
Oh, thank you.
It's Enzo Locchisano from ArchDWG 1242 Caledonia Avenue in Toronto.
Okay, so I guess the big outstanding, this is pretty straightforward, but the outstanding issue is that one-foot reserve, as you know, if you know. A one-foot reserve is...
Yeah, the one, if staff could pull up the site plan, it doesn't cover the front of the house. It's a one-foot strip in the street that goes to the property line. The driveway is existing, there you see it on the top left-hand corner of the driveway, it says one-foot reserve by Register Plan 4374. So the driveway is existing. We're not, we're not doing anything to the driveway. We're not sure what this one-foot reserve is. It's sort of in the middle of, of the drive. It's sort of in the middle of, of the drive. So again, we have ample space for parking in the front anyway without having to cross this one-foot reserve, which I'm not sure what it is at this point.
You're saying this one-foot reserve sits within the street allowance?
Correct.
Not on your private property?
Not on, not on the property, no. It ends right at the property line. And, and the driveway is existing. That's, that's why we positioned the, the addition in line with the existing house. And we didn't extend the garage over so that the garage door of the new garage stays within the limits of the, of the driveway width that we currently have.
Okay. Is, is that, is that it for your comments?
Uh, yeah, so as you can see, item number one, with regards to FSI was deleted due to a bylaw change. The, and item, I think it was number three, with, working with planning in order to fit within the, the height of the area was reduced to seven-point-five meters, which fulfilled their requirements. And the front yard setback, again, that's a technical variance because the we're still in line with the existing house, which is located at five-point-nine-nine, which the planner was, was good. And the deck on the second floor is really, the purpose of the deck is just to create a transfer for exiting or creating a second exit for the unit on the second floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Locchisano. Panel, any other questions? And no other speakers come in?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So is it now, now time to go into committee for maybe some discussion? Still got this one-foot reserve conundrum, I guess?
And there was a letter of opposition from, from the neighbor regarding the balcony, which is
Which, which one does he feel is minor? Oh, the, the rear balcony? Well, we can't change it even if we, I'm not even gonna put the opportunity out to reduce the size of it because that's a change, right? So we ready for? Yeah. Sure.
So with that, I believe the application meets the four tests. I move a motion for approval as the application, I'll just, I'll just say as revised. Three variances now, not four, subject to the forestry condition.
And you don't have any issues with this one-foot reserve thing?
It is an existing condition. The driveway is there. If something comes up in the future, then the applicant or owner will just have future discussions with the city because it's running down the street. So it's not just gonna be this site. So it's clearly there for utility or something.
Okay.
So any time in the future when those utility or pipe needs to be repaired, then everyone will get notice and saying, well, your driveway is gonna be out of commission for X number of days and you're just gonna have to deal with that. Is what it looks like. I'm guessing.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, subject to urban forestry condition two. Is there a second or for that motion?
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? Approved unanimously? Thank you very much, Mr. Locchisano. Moving on to item eleven, fifty-four Rexdale Boulevard. To construct a covered outdoor patio along the east side of the existing building. Two variances. No agency comments. No public participation. Correct, Camille?
No, Mr. Chair.
My note says simple, straightforward and clear. Do my colleagues agree?
If, if no one has any questions, I'm prepared to make a motion. There's no one here to speak to the matter anyway, is there?
Well, we should have Abayomi
Sorry. I jumped the gun on that one. I'm getting anxious.
Right, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Mr. Awotungasi? Sorry about pronunciation.
Yes. Awotungasi is my name.
Okay, are you okay with answering a question or two, if we have any, and, and not presenting? It's pretty straightforward what's, what you're proposing here.
Yes.
Okay. So. Ms. Alderson, I think you had a question, or no? No, you didn't.
No, I was, I was, I was prepared, I was prepared to go right into emotion.
No questions?
No, no questions?
Let's hear your motion.
Okay. This is a very straightforward application. I believe it meets the four tests. It's certainly desirable because there is a summer patio season coming up. So I move for approval with no conditions.
All in favor? Approved unanimously. The second there was Bill. Okay, Mr. Locchisano, hope you didn't go too far.
Nope, still here.
Good. So I see you're the agent on number twelve. Thirty-three Hill Garden Road.
Yeah, we're requesting a
Sure, I'm just, sorry, sorry, just
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, let me just do a quick summary here. Construct a one-story front rear additions and a new covered porch. Six variances. Oh. Community Planning has requested deferral of this application. Are you aware of that and what are your comments on that?
Yes. Yes, we, we understand that they do have, we're able to resolve two of the issues, but we still have the one item, which is coverage. And we, we indicated to them that we're willing to revise the drawing in order to come up with a more suitable coverage number. So obviously, we will have to defer this in order to give us enough time to revise the drawing and resubmit to community planning.
Sure, okay. So any questions of Mr. Locchisano on the deferral request and a motion on the deferral request?
Makes sense. I'll move a motion for a deferral to allow the applicant time to revise the drawings and work with city staff.
And a second there?
Yes, I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. Call in favor? Item is deferred. Thank you, Mr. Locchisano, and we'll see you at another time. Item thirteen has been deferred. Item fourteen is sixty-one twenty-sixth Street. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. Three variances. Urban forestry conditions two and three. A Metro Link's advisory. And a note to myself that this is straightforward and clear. And in my opinion, does not require a presentation? Agreed, thank you, okay. So. Do we have Mirka Kulesha?
Good, good morning, good morning. My name is Mirka Kulesha and I'm with the Land Design Studio. We are the designers and also I'm an agent on this project. Oh, my address is four-fifty-two Tennyson Drive in Oakville.
Okay. So Mirka, you heard our conversation. Hopefully, we don't need a presentation from you, but would you be okay with answering? Yep, okay. So if we have a question or two, we'll just move into that then. Okay? Okay. Questions? Comments? Motion?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there are two people who are planning on speaking as well.
Oh. Okay. Not so simple. Okay, let's, um. Ah, yeah. Yeah, maybe, you know what? Can we go back, Mirka? Maybe there's, I should have noticed this. There are a couple of people that wanna speak to your application, so can we just rewind?
Okay, yes.
Who knows? Let, let, let's be safe, make a presentation.
Of course.
Yeah.
So we are proposing a replacement, a two-story replacement dwelling. We have three variances here. The first one is floor spacing decks increased from oh-point-thirty-five times to oh-point-fifty-three times, which gives us the area of two-hundred-and-forty-eight square meters. The second variance is the size of proposed balcony, seven-point-nine meters and allowed balcony sizes four square meters. And the third is the, to allow an encro, an encroachment of stairs, which are two-seventy-seven meters wide, although two-meter-wide stairs are allowed. If you allow me to comment on this particular point. The stairs we proposed are two-point-five meters wide. The on, the only encroachment is one step, which is two-meters-seventy-seven meters wide. So we are talking about one particular step. It's a twenty-five-centimeters encroachment into the front yard.
Okay. Questions, panel? Okay, so I guess we can now hear from Lee Wang.
Hi.
Hello. Could you just repeat?
Hello?
Could you just repeat?
Yes, my name's My name's Lee Wang. My address is fifty-seven twenty-sixth Street, south of this proposed new construction. And yes, I have forwarded my concerns is that this is a, there's an existing concrete wall, board wall, encroached into our property by quite a lot. And I wanted to make sure that the built, the new build will be away enough from the property border line and property line. I, I wonder how, how much of the way from the property line, not from the concrete wall, because it encroached into our property by so much. Almost entirely encroached into our property because the concrete wall and the, you know, resolution for that might be a little complicated. And I have not heard from anything from this new neighbor that, to address and how we are going to address, how it's going to be addressed. And from the survey, I, my understanding is that they encroach quite a bit and the distance now from the new build, how far away is that from the, from our property line? I just wanted to make sure that this is going to be addressed. And, and also the driveway is, is a, is a new one. And the current cutout from the curb, it has a little cutout now from the curb, I believe is already in our property. I just also want to make sure the driveway and the house is have to have a proper distance from our property line, from the property line.
Okay, well, Ms. Kalesha and Roberto can speak to this, but I will just say that there's no variance requested here for a side yard setback, so it's zoning compliant. So is there anything else, Ms. Wang? For now? Hello?
No.
Okay.
Not for, not for now. Are, are we going to address this together with the, the homeowner or the applications or, or anybody? We, we can address this together?
Well, yeah, the agent will be addressing your comments in a few minutes.
Sure.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Mr. Choles from the Long Branch Neighborhood Association.
Morning again. My name is Andy Choles. I'm with the LBNA. I live at twelve Jasmine Avenue, Long Branch, several blocks south of this property. Well, the LBNA acknowledges there are three variances applied to this property, including FSI of zero-point-five-three, where zero-point-three-five is permitted. This is not completely out of line with other approvals in the area. And there's a second floor balcony that's almost double the allowed size, seven-point-nine meters squared as opposed to four-point-meter squared. Perhaps this balcony could be reduced in size, but I guess that's not for me to say. There is mention by forestry that the application to harm and remove a tree should be filed. They see hoarding is planned for trees on a neighboring property. And the photos show a couple of smaller trees in the backyard. Hopefully, those can be saved. A note from the completed Long Branch Neighborhood Character Guidelines, the applicant states, "Recommended planting after construction is completed." "I do hope that one or more trees are planted on the property." Call me a tree hugger, but trees on Long Branch lots north of Lake Shore Boulevard are rather few and far between. I've expressed a couple of minor concerns, but on the whole, the LBNA is of the opinion that the COA should judge this application based on its merits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Choles. Panel, any questions or comments from Mr. Choles? Okay, Ms. Kalesha? You have a five-minute opportunity to rebut what you've just heard from Ms. Wang and Mr. Choles.
Okay, so let me answer, maybe disperse Ms. Wang's concerns. I understand she's a neighbor south of the property, number fifty-seven, correct?
Yes.
She is concerned about setbacks, the distance from, of the, of the proposed dwelling from side lot line. The dwelling is proposed to be located three feet from the side lot line, which is perfectly in agreement with zoning bylaw. There is no variance here. I am not really sure what she refers to, what kind of retaining wall she refers to. I guess there is one, which I can see, which crosses the lot line. And I'm pretty sure this can be addressed even during the construction unless this wall plays some role in the protection of the property of fifty-seven, at fifty-seven. I cannot really comment on that. Was there anything else that Ms. Wang asked?
It's your responsibility to take the notes on what's being said, ma'am.
Okay, so I guess I've answered the questions. As far as Long Branch Associations
No, sorry, sorry, I'm, I'm, sorry, ma'am, I'm gonna help you a little bit. I shouldn't, but I'm going to. She's concerned about the side yard setback between your house and hers and how it relates to the zoning bylaw.
This is I just addressed. The, the side yard setback is ninety-two centimeters, which is more than required ninety centimeters from side lot line. So there is no encroachment here at all.
So the bylaw minimum is zero-point-nine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, speak
Or one-point-two, but it can be shifted. So the dwelling can be shifted. And one, zero-point-nine is the acceptable, the proper setback. We actually discussed it during my application when it was submitted. We discussed it with zoning department and they provided an explanation that this is in compliance with zoning bylaw.
Okay. Want to speak to Mr. Choles then?
Yes, with pleasure. As I said, I am a tree hugger. Actually, he mentioned there are two small trees in the backyard. I don't have a larger site plan or survey in front of me, but I know that we, and it's pretty obvious to me, that owner will have to apply for a tree injury permit from urban forestry. I believe it's for the trees which are located at the property, which is at the rear of sixty-one twenty-sixth Street. The trees are, actually, there is about two meters Actually, there is about two meters of tree protection zone that encro... That is on the 6126 Street lot. We will, of course, the owner will submit the application, and we understand this is the condition for building permit to be issued. There are no other trees on the property. There's just a group of bushes, I believe, in the middle of the rear yard.
Okay.
It's basically like a wasteland right now. Let's... Let's be honest.
Panel, any questions for Ms. Kulesha? So let's go into committee and make a motion.
So with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the four tests subject to the forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second there for Mr. Dalton's motion?
Mr. Chair, I will second that, I believe, is a community planning condition.
No. Just urban forestry, two and three.
Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kulesha. Moving on to item 15. 223 John Street. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are... Can we get rid of that? Come on, how come that's... Ten variances. We have urban forestry condition two, planning condition, and two transportation review conditions. The agent is Nick Sacconi.
Yep, hello, Nick Sacconi. Nick Sacconi here.
Hi.
I'm the agent, hi.
And your address?
Nick Sacconi here. 103 Glenlong Avenue in Toronto.
Okay. I guess, could you just... It's pretty straightforward, but if you could just at least address your views on urban forestry condition two, the planning condition, and the transportation review conditions, the two of them. If you have anything else to say, fine, but we need to hear from you on those things. Whether you're okay with them?
Yeah, 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 we're okay with all of them. We've been back and forth trying to get exactly what spilled out in the planning and urban forestry condition and transportation. We're okay with everything that's set out in those conditions.
Okay, nothing else that you want to say?
No, this, it appears to be a new house, but the matter of the fact, we actually are maintaining two of the sidewalls. The reason why it's come in as a new home instead as a renovation is because we don't meet the minimum 50%. We're just under that amount of wall area to be standing. So that's why this is coming in as a new application. But if you see on the plans, the two sidewalls are remaining the same. My client did speak to the neighbors, the both immediate neighbors, and they're okay with... They have no objection of the proposal.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Just a comment, if you get buy-in from your neighbors, it's always helpful to an application if you get a letter from them and submit it. Thank you.
Noted, thank you.
No speakers, Camille?
No, Mr. Chair.
So let's go into committee for a motion then.
With that, I'd like to move a motion for approval. I believe the application meets the four tests subject to the planning, transportation, and forestry comments.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second there?
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Popovich, thank you very much. All in favor? Application's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Sacconi.
Sorry, that was planning, transportation, and forestry. Thank you.
Yeah, urban forestry, planning, and transportation, too. Item number 16, 71 City View Drive. Purpose is to convert a portion of the existing building into a vehicle dealership. This... This project was approved, I guess, seven or eight years ago. And it was, the decision was to approve until February the 1st, 2025, which just passed. We have no comments. Camille, I don't believe we have anybody lined up to speak to this one?
No, Mr. Chair, just the agent.
Okay.
And we have no letters of opposition?
No, no. Mr. Benskowsky's the agent? Jonathan?
Committee, Jonathan Benskowsky, 301 Kiwanis Avenue.
Yeah, so are you looking for like an extension of the timeline or... Without a timeline, what are you looking for here?
Mr. Chair, I would prefer without a timeline. This was given seven years. There was not one violation issued by MLS as it relates to the use that's there. I will just make a quick note that this isn't an employment district. This property and the building that's on it essentially repairs and buys damaged cars. They have up to 30 employees there. So in terms of the employment uses being utilized through that, they then sell the vehicles that they buy that are damaged. So they actually run the auto body, they repair the cars, and sell them all within there. So that employment use is maintained as being 30 employees there. I think that's pretty much it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, guys, I'm just looking at the previous decision from 2018. The purpose was to convert a portion of the existing building into a vehicle dealership. And the current purpose... Oh, it's exactly the same, okay. All right.
Yes, exactly the same, Mr. Chair. There's no alteration.
Okay, so I guess we're just... Is there any questions for Mr. Benskowsky? So I guess we... Yes, there is a question.
Just to follow up on your question, is the application, I don't see it, maybe it's there, for an additional seven years, or is it for an indefinite period?
Well, that's what I asked.
Oh, okay, and?
That's up to us.
Okay.
Actually, in looking back, the 2018 decision provided it for seven years, but then there was also the condition that there be no outside storage. And looking at it on Google Earth, it looked like there was cars parked outside. Is that allowed, or is that in contravention of the condition?
I don't know how you could get around it. Repairing vehicles that have been...
Well, that was my point.
Well, they're not asking for permission to do that. What they do and what they apply to do are different.
And if it comes initially, it'll be identified later, so...
Well, that's, yeah, I'm just going to say, why don't we go into committee? I think that's a discussion point. Do we want to just approve it or put another time on another?
Mr. Chair, for my comments, I'd be more inclined to extend for a further seven years. I feel that an indefinite period just opens up the possibility of risk in the future, but seven years has some certainty, and it can be revisited, and it's a decent amount of time. So that's my comment.
Would you entertain a little, like, 10 years? You like seven?
Since there have been no, since there have been no problems or issues over the past seven years, I probably could live with 10, but a fixed period, not an indefinite.
Well, we'll wait, we'll hear somebody's motion on that, I guess. Any other comments or... Okay, well, let's just, I'll just invite a motion then.
Mr. Chair, based on the considerations we've discussed, I believe that this application on balance meets the four tests. I would, however, impose a finite date, and I'm content to extend it to 10 years, then it can be revisited.
Okay, so a motion to approve the 10-year limitation.
So then, ending February 1st, 2035?
I guess that would be right, or Barbara, would the date be?
Or from today's date?
From today?
We would normally do it from the... We'll figure out this specific date, but we do it starting from the final binding date, yeah.
Okay, is that okay? Then it'd be 10 years from the date of approval. Not today's approval, the stamping.
Like once the appeal period's over.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. All in favor? Okay, approved. Mr. Jankowski? Hopefully, 10 years is better than nothing for you? And last, last but not least, for this morning, number 17. 42 Blaketon Road. Purpose is to construct a new three-story rear addition and a third-story addition above the existing dwelling in order to build a duplex. There are five variances. Oh, revised application. We have a revised application on this one, reducing the variances to four. I just want to see what they are again. Okay, variance two from the original's been eliminated, and five amended. And we have opposition from 36 Blaketon Road. Urban forestry condition two. And I noticed the agent, Mr. Milton, is here. I guess, Peter, in light of the fact that we do have some opposition here... I don't know, are we going to be speaking or hearing from that person?
There's nobody online.
Okay, anyway, if you could just briefly take us through your project here.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good morning. Peter Milton, 192 Lake Shore Road West. This is a fairly straightforward application, I believe. The proposal has been modified, so there is no longer a third floor. There is no longer a variance to the overall height. There is no longer a proposed platform on the third floor. The variances are for the front yard setback to allow the new addition, second-floor addition, and partial ground-floor addition to match the existing front yard setback that has existed for some 40 years. The main wall heights, front and rear, and the side main wall heights, we're requesting a slight increase to 7.88 meters and a request for a second-story platform at the rear of 9.62 meters. That platform would be off of the primary bedroom, and it would be constructed on top of a... Of a covering of the ground-floor deck area. So that covering will be constructed one way or another. It's simply felt that since it's already a structure that's going to be there, it's not unreasonable to request a platform there that the owners of the property may or may not use. With respect to the opposition letter received from 36 Blaketon, of course, I can't speak for everything that was in their mind, but clearly, their objection is to three-story dwelling. This is no longer a three-story dwelling. And also, I don't know if the committee has seen this of late, because whenever there's a basement apartment being added, it's now being referred to as a duplex. And duplex, even though even a fourplex would be permitted, the term duplex seems to concern many people. So this is the addition of a legal basement apartment so that the owners might be able to rent it out and generate some income. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Milton. Any questions for Mr. Milton? No? And we don't have anybody lined up to speak to this, Camille?
There's nobody online, Mr. Chair, but there is somebody in person. I'm not too sure which item.
Are you here? You must be here for the...
No, no.
You're just here of general interest.
Seeing where my tax dollars are going.
Okay, you must have heard about me, and you wanted to spend three hours... Okay, good for you. I do sign autographs. Okay, so I guess we can, thank you, Mr. Milton. I guess we can move into committee and decide on this.
So with that, I believe the application meets the four tests. I move a motion for approval subject to the forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second there for Mr. Dalton's motion? Yeah, room 432.
I could second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Milton. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you for the afternoon session at 1:00 PM.
Congrats. Must have been your excellent chairing. Oh, yeah, yeah, for one session. That was longer than two minutes.